Are we recording?
Sure.
I don't know, I've made the announcement, so it's on now. We're here for a regularly scheduled meeting of the zoning board of appeals. We are going to follow the agenda as posted on the door. I apologize, I'm a little rusty, I haven't been here in a while. So if I miss anything, please speak up. Because we've got professionals representing both applicants, just a note, if we can try and keep these presentations brief and on point, meaning, you know, explaining to us what the hardship is, explaining why we've got the minimum adjustment necessary, and explaining to us why you would not have substantial use of your property because of this application. With that, if you've got any cell phones on, please turn them off. And if you want, you can stay, we generally deliberate unless it's continued at the end of the hearings. You cannot speak during the deliberations, so please, if you've got something to say during the deliberations, unfortunately you have to keep that to yourself. And with that, if you don't want to stay for the deliberations, Woody, assuming he's still alive tomorrow, will help you out and let you know what happened tomorrow. So we're going to start with calendar number 28, 2018, application of Robert Maslin for 188 Long Neck Point Road to allow the relocation of HVAC units in lieu of the 90-foot minimum required front yard setback. Mr. Maslin?
Good evening, Merry Christmas to everyone, Happy Holidays. My name is Robert Maslin, I'm the attorney for the applicant. I guess I wrote this one up as I'm the applicant, but I represent the owner as well. Just to tighten the record up a little bit, I emailed into Jeremy and Woody the owner's authorization letter, so that should be in the record, and we did the neighbor notices and submitted those probably a couple of weeks ago, and they haven't heard anything, so they should be in order.
Woody has all that in order?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And I have a copy of Woody's staff questions for the board.
Great.
If you want to be, I mean, to be really brief, I could say, "Do you have any questions?", but I don't think you want me to be that, quite that brief.
Not quite that brief.
What's?
Not quite that brief.
No, okay. All right, this property is just over three and a half acres, it's on the west side of Long Neck Point Road, and it runs from a driveway entrance along the road down to Long Island Sound over on the west here. This property was created years ago, back in the 19, early 1980s, by variants. There were three other properties that combined for a total of seven-plus acres, each having a house on it. The owner at that time decided, "Well, let's make these conforming, at least having one house per lot, instead of four houses on one lot." It's a pretty substantial house, but the way they configured the properties, the only, I think the best way to do it was to do it so that it ended up like this. The other three properties were here, the next three down on Long Neck Point Road. One of the-
Let me understand something, so it was created, it was created by subdivision, right?
Subdiv- and variants.
And variances were required for the subdivision?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, and this is one of those unusual situations where you can get a variance because you already have so many significant nonconformities, they're being basically traded off for other nonconformities.
Okay.
So the one that's really relevant here, and by the way, there were three other variances along the way that dealt with development and expansion of the house. One of them, which I have a copy in the application, dealt specifically with the HVAC units and some other things. But the problem here is, when you, when you come in to the property, we have this 90-foot rule. It's, it's the rule that says, for subdivision lots that are rear lots, created after 1961, you add 50 feet to the ordinary front setback, which creates a 90-foot setback along here where my pointer is pointing. And this, this boundary that runs roughly north and south between the site and the three other subdivision properties is the one I'm talking about. So this was created by variants back in 1982. And it's the corner of the house, and it's been there ever since. Around 2000, 2001, substantial work has been, was done on this property. And one of the things that eventually was done was HVAC units. There are multiple HVAC units on the property, they're split up because of the runs that would not work. And in the prior variants, there was a certification letter from an air conditioning consultant saying that you couldn't put them all in good locations that comply. There's a set of HVAC units up on the north corner of the, or off the north corner of the building. These are in a setback, they're by variants, they're not at issue in this, but I mention them because these have a concrete solid wall around them, and they're sunken a little bit. And they're out of sight as you approach the property. When you walk in to the main entrance, which you really want to make look appealing, there's a window here, and this is photograph one in the handout I just submitted. You look to your left, and you see the top of a row of HVAC units for a house of this stature that's just not well thought out. I don't know why they placed them there. And there's a fairly low hedge here, which is what you want for the front of the house, so it's, there's a much better location, which is along the side behind these bushes here. These are, I believe, rhododendrons, they're pretty big and substantial, they'll be adjusted a little bit for the relocated units. But down along the sides here, so you're not going to see them from the front, you're not going to see them from the front entrance. Photograph number four shows a view from the rear, looking forward along this side wall, and the HVAC units would go in this general area here. One, two, three, four, five. Photograph five shows the relationship between the corner of the building, the shrubbery on the left here, which would be adjusted a bit and eventually set up to scre- oh, I'm sorry, screen the units. The relationship between that and what is a pretty substantial row of arborvitae that's going to continue on along the boundary. And then finally, number six is rotated a little bit to the right, and this is the adjoining house, and I think that's 192 Long Neck Point. I put the address in, yeah, it's 192 Long Neck Point, which is that first house.
So that row of arborvitae is going to continue?
That's, yes, that's this one here.
And that's on your client's property?
Yes, it is.
And the units are going to go between the rhododendron and the house?
Yeah, the rhododendrons-
You've got to pull them out?
Pulled out a little bit, yeah.
A little bit?
And Bob, do you have anything from the Henrys to say they're okay with it?
No, they talked, and now, they just had a fairly significant project-
Yeah.
-along here that ended up in quite a bit of regrading, and they had a discussion about that, and everybody's happy. There was some concern in the beginning, but they've, they're happy. Now, the other thing I did was, and this is partially in response to one of Woody's questions, I went online and I prepared a, and it's tough getting this to print, this new GIS system's a little difficult to get prints off. Can you see that?
Yeah.
The yellow, and there's, there's a copy of this in the handout, both in a reduced form and an 11 by 17. So I ran these yellow lines to show the distance, and these are rough, I didn't, they're not surveyor's lines, but just to give you a general idea. So I ran one yellow line from the existing area where the HVAC units are over to the pool on the adjoining property, and that turned out to be about 158 feet, the way I ended up with the measurement. The new location, again, rough, the surveyor's dimensions are much more precise, and yes, they, we do show it at 35 feet instead of 43 and a half. But, you know, there's a row of them, so when you're looking at roughly, it's a similar number, it's 158 feet, subject to a few feet one way or the other, based on which end of the row of units you're looking at. And that's only to the pool, if you took it out to the house, it's quite a bit more. And then I also ran a yellow line over to the, what looks like a little terrace or pool layout on the next property to the south, and that's 226 feet, so we're talking quite a distance. The existing arborvitae row, you can see it runs down along the boundary, and that will continue and then extend a little farther south along the boundary as well.
Do we have a-
One of the things that the neighbors would be concerned about is down along here, there's a view, there's no view easement per se, but when you look out from the back of this property, you see right down to the sound. And rather than monkey with that, you don't want to put 10-foot or 15-foot arborvitae in to block that view.
Do we have a landscaping plan?
It's roughly the same, no, we don't, we don't have a formal plan, but it's roughly the same plant, planting layout that's there now.
And did you explore, first off, is there a conforming location on the property?
Not that would work. Just because of the distances involved, and that was pretty well set in the earlier variants. It's mentioned in the, in the variants that's included in the application.
And did you explore moving these to the southwest?
South, what do you mean?
Towards the back of the residence?
You're talking about back down here?
Yeah.
Well, this is open-
Not necessarily behind, but moving it, moving them, if you flip over to your other, other map. If you take that whole line where you're planning to relocate them and move them down, you'd be further-
Down a little?
Yeah. The further you move them down, it would seem to me, the further away from the property line they become.
Well, it's true, but, you know, there's kind of an established building setback at the corner that's, you know, quite close. Down along here is an op- like a set of windows-
Yeah.
That-
From the lower level.
Right, you've been, did you show this when you-
I know the house, sure.
Yeah. It's a, it's a beautiful house, but-
It's all set of windows that you'd be looking right at.
And you'd be looking right at them, you'd end up with the same problem you have with the existing units up here off to the left.
The house, you walk in on the upper, and then you walk down.
Yeah. You go in and there's that whole, it's a pretty-
Bob, is there any reason to move them other than the cosmetic aspect?
Well, I guess, I don't, I think as a practical matter-
Okay.
When you look at the value and what you want to see, and you can't adjust that without moving these.
I'd like to see-
Because you're not going to put bigger screening or higher plantings along here, you're, you're not going to, you know, block off the view from the, from the window in the, in the main entrance. It just was poorly thought out, I think, is really what-
Can you move those units in such a way that they're all beyond the 40-foot lot? I mean, you get just-
I knew somebody was going to ask me that question, because it's in Woody's-
Yeah, yeah, but it makes sense, though, I mean, it's-
Why don't I leave that in your hands?
You're talking about just pushing it down like two units?
Like, take these units and put them there?
Yeah, yeah.
If they'll fit, I-
Can you reduce the units?
Reduce them, I doubt it.
Okay, so it's a zone, it's a zone, okay, okay.
All right, so-
But I would, I'd leave it in your hands, you know, you're talking, what, seven feet?
Here's, here's, I think, where I come out on this. I'd like you to go back and figure that out. I'd like to figure out where they can be placed-
Okay.
-so that they're 40 feet away. And I'd like to have on the public record a landscape plan, because I don't, what I don't want is the neighbor across at 153-
Either one.
-to come and say, "Hey, by the way, they planted all these arborvitae's, no one told me about it, wasn't part of the public record, and now I'm angry."
Okay. One of the things that Woody mentioned in his memo is, he's got a list of conditions from other variances, and submitting it is-
I would rather have it on the public record, so if the neighbor wants to come and comment on it, they can come and comment on it.
So what are you talking about, continuing this, or?
I think so, yeah.
What about putting limitations on where the-
They're not going to be using air conditioning until the spring presumably anyway.
Well, that's true, but-
And I drove over that site, I mean, it's a, it's a war zone. I mean, it doesn't look like they're moving in anytime soon. So I don't think that there's a big hardship to the applicant to continue it. Does anyone, am I out on a ledge here, or do you guys sort of agree with that?
Yeah, I mean, I can live with that, my, it's, I was hoping we could just push things back, you know, 40 feet from, from, from the boundary line. And with the arborvitae, I mean, is that a zoning issue, or is that a private property?
It's really a private issue, because the-
The only thing we struggled with in the past-
There's no, there's no view, I'm sorry, there's no view easement per se. And it's really got two issues here. One is screening the units, and then what I think you're talking about is putting up plantings that have nothing to do with screening the units. Except over here, where it provides a double layer of screening.
Right, I mean, but it was part of your, your record that you were going to do it, so I think-
Yeah.
If we're going to do it, we should have it on the record. I think, Chuck, the reason I, I, I'm leaning towards a continuance is we've had several applications where Woody's been left holding the bag, because we said, "Yeah, do a screening plan." And, and the screening plan then has to get approved by Woody, and we've gotten pushback as to, well, what we're really, what did the board really want to say? So I think if, if we figure out exactly where those units were going to go to get us to that 40 feet, make sure that they're not going to impair, we're not going to have the same issue where they're impairing, you know, views from the house, and make sure we've got enough room to do that. And then also, if you're going to plant them, and it's part of the application, I'd like to see it. If you don't want the arborvitae as part of the application, give us the screening plan for around the units.
Okay. And that's just over here?
Yep. And I would consider, I think the front units you said were, were sunken in?
Oh, the, these here?
Yeah.
These aren't moving?
Right. But what I'm suggesting is, if we're, if we're going to be close to the property line, maybe you look at a technique like that. If it doesn't make sense for the project, that's fine, come back and tell us that, that's fine.
Why can't you sink the units where they are? Just sink them.
Because you're still going to have, you're going to be looking right at the top of them from that window.
No, you're not. If you sink them and you put a grate on top, I've seen that before.
I, I, I'll ask, but-
Yeah, explore-
But we're really, you know, but I'm hoping you look at this as a modification to an existing variance. If they came in in 2002 and said, "We want to, we're going to put the units over here," what would you do? You know, and they were okay with it against the other wall, and all we're doing is just modifying-
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think I'm suggesting what Mr. Capribo's suggesting. I think I just want to see, I just want to, I want a complete record. That's, that's really what I'm trying to do.
Okay.
And just, you know, I don't, I mean, if you want to get an HVAC guy to clean it up and say, "Hey, yeah, they've got to go here because of X, Y, and Z," or, you know, whatever, if you want to do that, great, if you don't, I'm not going to- I mean, I trust that you've got perfect, it's, it's a, it's a big project, I trust you have-
There's a big project underway now, and you know they're doing it right.
Is the, can you double up those units? Do you see, take these out of here and-
I don't know what the separation is with them, and-
Yeah, like how many feet have to be in between?
And as, the more separation, when you double them up, it just pushes everything closer to the boundary. Because that, you know, I, I'm not sure that does anything in terms of getting, staying farther away from the boundary.
Yeah, I think I'm more comfortable with them on the side than sinking them or doing anything in the front.
Yeah.
I like that idea, but if you could do it with a conformer-
The front, are you talking about the water being the front, or the front being-
I'm talking about the front of the house, I like them on the side where they're proposing them.
Yeah, okay.
But I like Chuck's comment about pushing them down.
Yeah, not very far, it's just about five or six feet.
Yeah.
That you could do right now.
But I get Michael's comment, that he's like saying, "Let's avoid all pushback from neighbors and everybody else, let's get on the record, that they're clear about what landscaping they're doing, and we've eliminated all options, yes."
Yeah, so-
So basically, it's a landscape plan?
So, so I want to see two things. I want to, I want to see the actual location where you're going to put these things. And I want to see how you're going to screen them, whether it's by arborvitae, or whether it's by something smaller around the units themselves.
Or the rhododendrons that-
Or the rhododendrons.
Mm-hmm. In other words, you want us to tell you what we're considering the screening?
Correct.
And if the arborvitae is something different, then you don't-
I don't care.
Got it.
I want it screened, and I want to know what you can use it for.
What's the third thing?
The third thing was coming from Ruth Ann.
Double stacking option?
Yeah, so what I was going to suggest is you have an HVAC contractor explain why this is the right decision.
Okay.
So that you've explored whatever-
Yeah, I get a letter from them.
But I think on the arborvitae's-
Right, I don't know what double stacking is, I don't know what, what that means, but, but, but whatever, just, just some proof to us that you've explored something other than just during this.
The, on the arborvitae's, I mean, do they have to be arborvitae's?
Well, it's kind of what's there anyway.
Because arborvitae continue to grow, so maybe the landscape person can kind of-
Something lower stretch.
Yeah, something that would be lower so you'd get views over it.
Well, these have been there for years, I mean, you can tell.
Oh, I know that, but were you talking about continuing that line?
Down a little bit, not, not into the, to the, where that open air is along the, in other words, not all the way down here where you're-
So just adding like a couple more?
Couple more, that's basically it. You know, which you, oops, now I'm in trouble.
You all right?
Okay. Yeah, and they're, that's, those, that stuff's underway now, it's, when they started regrading over here, there was a potential issue with those plantings and survivability, because they cut really close to the boundary. And I think that, I'm pretty sure that got worked out. Okay, so-
Those three, three things, if we have a little clarification, I think it'll make our lives a lot easier. Woody, did you have anything you want to add, or any questions?
Not really, I'll just ask though, are the rhododendrons still there?
These pictures, these pictures I took the other day.
You did? That's funny. It's the neighbor, Mr. Henry?
Like a week before you were there?
Yeah, yeah.
There's, I mean, there's, there's dirt over here from, you know, tracking and, you know, machines going back and-
When were those taken?
Sorry?
When were those taken?
I wonder, you and I, they're about three weeks ago?
Yeah. The reason is the neighbor, Henry-
Probably two, three weeks before that.
Mr. Henry came into the office and questioned this and looked at the plans. He did talk about a few easements and other things, but he said the rhododendrons were removed in that area. The contractors had taken them.
I think what happened was some of these were removed, and they were being replaced, but it's part of-
Yeah, so just, just show us what the screening plan is going to be. And I don't think, I don't think we need to belabor that.
One, one more question. For the record, what is the hardship to do this?
Well, four times previous, the boards found hardships, but the hardship is basically created when, in 1961, the, well, back in the 40s, when Darian went from units per acre to one unit per lot, and went to lot size in terms of determining density. That threw the whole property into nonconformance. In 1982, when they traded off that nonconformity, the four units on one, one site into one unit per site, or one unit per lot, they ended up with multiple variances, because there was no way to configure it so that all the, all the lots conform. So that created a number of issues. The most significant one that we're dealing with here is that 90 feet, the extra 50 feet. And that's a change in the regulations, which leaves a house here, but you can't put the things along the side wall that you would ordinarily put along the side wall of a house. And the other thing, too, is we're, we're not any closer than this corner here, we're farther away than the corner, and, you know, so-
So it's a-
And we're taking one variance and moving it around.
What got divided is very strange shape, all those little lots.
Yes.
I mean, they're all nonconforming, now you just, it's just a swap from one nonconforming area to another.
And there's, there's another way to look at this. When you come in, there's a line here that represents basically the minimum width when you get into a rear lot. And somebody could probably say, "Well, why don't you measure the 90 feet from here?" I, I don't know. Or from a line across here, but no, it's the way the regulation's written, it's here. But this is not even a standard flag lot, because it's got this kind of boomerang-shaped accessway that widens out quite a bit. So the hardship basically is several changes in the regulations and prior variances where the board has already found hardships, and they're, they're pretty well documented, so. And then the other thing I, while I'm standing here, so we don't have to rehash this next time, going through Woody's memo number two, is the equipment where it's supposed to be according to the previous variance? I think he's talking about this. When you scale it, it's right on the money, it's 43.5 feet. We talked about number three. We talked about four, and number five, I think we're going to cover with the landscape plan. Sound deadening, nowadays, these things are, you can't even, you just, you can't hear, there's nothing like they used to be.
These are all the units going in, they're not, they're not moving the same ones?
To the extent, to the extent that they can be reused, yeah, but there may be, there may be a combination. And then the rest was Woody's list of potential conditions, and I think we've kind of mooted some of those out by, you know, coming back with a landscape plan. So for next time, landscape, actual location, which this is, I mean, if you want us to move it back to 40 feet, we'll consider that and see how it works out.
And just want to see, just have the, have the surveyor put it on the, on the map and see what it actually looks like.
Yeah, well, that's-
If moving it back to 40 feet puts it in front of the windows, we're just, we're just recreating the problem.
Yes.
So I don't want to, I don't want to say, "Yeah, move it back five feet and have the same problem come up."
Okay.
So that's, that's the only reason I'm asking for that.
Okay, I got it. Landscape screening, a contractor's letter, and look at double stacking for, who came up with that?
Ruth Ann.
Ruth Ann.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
Perfect.
Because in the way, we see them stacked on top of each other, but-
Thank you very much.
And we're what, January, whatever?
And next meeting, Woody, January?
January 16.
January 16.
Okay. Everything I had on board is already in the record, including my usual photo book and the aerial photograph.
Perfect.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sorry I ran over my 10 minutes, but your timer didn't go off, so it was our fault.
We had a lot of, a lot of additional questions. Now, let me ask, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to be heard on this application? Seeing no one, we will continue this till January.
Merry Christmas, everyone.
Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays. Okay. Moving along on the agenda, we are at calendar number 29, 2018, the application of Jeff McDougall on behalf of David Thomas, Stephen Kent Epley, 47 Five Mile River Road.
Jeff McDougall from William Seymour and Associates, representing the Epleys tonight in this application. This application is to remodel a portion of the existing residence and put some additions onto it. This property was the subject of a variance last year, calendar number 22, 2017. That variance was for the demolition of the house and the reconstruction of a new house, set back a little bit from where the current house sits. This variance is still in effect, there have been extensions to it, it's still in effect. This project that we're looking at here really doesn't take that variance into account at all, it's totally separate from that. We are looking at reutilizing a portion of the structure, all of the foundation of the structure, and not getting any closer to the road. And the house will comply with all of the bulk and other setback regulations. One of the unusual aspects of this application is the fact that this property was subject to a variance before the house was built. In 1954, it was calendar 61-1954 that was approved, basically establishing a 25-foot front yard off of the front property line. That was for the purpose of erecting the house, and the reasons that were given back then had to do with the terrain, the soils on the property, and the fact that many of the other houses along this portion of Five Mile River are even closer than 25 feet to the front property line. We feel that that variance really is still in effect, and, you know, based on chapter- We feel that that variance really is still in effect, and, you know, based on chapter 124, Section 86B of the Connecticut General Statutes, which speaks that, you know, a variance is, has been granted by the Zoning Board of Appeals, runs with the land, and shall not be personal in nature to the person who applied for and received the variance, and a variance shall not be extinguished solely because of the change in ownership, or the transfer of title to a different owner to the property. It's apparent that those conditions still apply to this lot, and that really falls in your area to agree with that or not. So this application, if you find that there's some fault in that logic, that we have applied for variances to allow this residence to remain, a portion of it, obviously it will be raised up to comply with all of the flood regulations. Most of the new construction will be to the rear of the house and on to the left-hand side, which is the west side of the house, which will be the garage with a room above it. I do have a diagram, which I have outlined here, showing what we feel is the current buildable area based on the variance that was granted in 1954. That being this green line, this is 25 feet off of the street line, this is the, under the current zoning regulations, this red outline would be the zoning setback lines, being 65 feet off the center line of the road, 15 feet side yard, and 25 foot rear yard, which basically leaves a buildable area of 25 feet wide. And I believe that that is one of the things that I'm sure they were looking at when this house was originally constructed in 1954, and reasoning behind granting that variance.
So the variance that was granted in 1954 was to change the front yard setback?
Correct.
Or to allow a building to be built that close to the road?
That is potentially a matter of interpretation as to the language in the variance.
Because those are two distinct things, right?
When you read, I have, I don't know if you have a copy of this variance in there, but when you read this, it's resolved that a variance, a little hard to read this, a variance be granted to make legal the erection of a dwelling not less than 25 feet back from the Five Mile River Road on the ground that strict enforcement of the regulations would result in practical difficulty and unnecessary hardship.
Okay, so they granted an easement for the erection of a residence within the...
Correct.
Setback.
Correct. It's unusual, you know, this is not something I've ever come across before, you know, and that's why we're kind of taking this approach, you know, it's kind of new ground for us to look at this this way. We have made an application to the Planning and Zoning Commission for Section 810 Coastal Site Plan Review, Section 820 Flood Damage Prevention, and Section 850 Land Filling, Excavation, and Earth Removal. We did meet with staff on this project earlier. Woody was there, Dave was there, Jeremy was there, and Fred was there. And when we brought this plan up and described how this approach is going to create less disturbance on the property through utilization of the existing foundation, keeping the house forward, we're further away from the mean high water and the regulated areas, it seemed like they felt that that was a good plan. We will find that out when we go before the Planning and Zoning Commission. The commission had already granted approval for the previous house, so this, in that respect, we're going to be a little more compliant with the regulations in terms of coastal area management and flood damage prevention. The house is going to be a foot higher than what had previously been approved, and I think that the design that is happening here will have less impact on the coastal resources than the previously approved plan.
In 2017, a variance was granted.
Correct.
A front yard variance.
Correct.
At 33 feet. Why would you need a variance in 2017 if you're allowed to go 25 feet?
I cannot answer that, I did not present that.
Because I think that's the difference, is the, is the variance was for that particular application to build that particular structure.
Is that the way you're hearing that?
That's what I'm, that's how I'm interpreting it. So what's happening here, it's not, it's not a variance making the front yard setback 25 feet, it's a variance allowing you to build up to 25 feet with whatever your proposed application is.
So it was gonna be knocked down then in 2017?
Yes, yes, it's going to be a new structure.
And so I think, I think, I wasn't, I didn't sit on that, I remember it.
I did too.
But what it seems to me like is it was an improvement in the encroachment and the front yard setback, so it was a pretty easy ask.
But strangely, I mean, if a variance runs with the land, which it does, I mean, now we're saying it runs with the house?
No, it definitely runs with the land, but it's for the...
Runs with the land.
It's for the application. That's, it's sort of, why ask Bob to go back and give us more concrete plans? Because that's what we're granting a variance for.
Was the garage pushed back in this plan, relative to the last plan?
In this, in our proposed plan?
Yes.
Yeah, this garage has stepped back from the house.
And, okay.
So, you know, I could have Mr. Epley, you know, give you some background on his design criteria and what he has, he has talked to many of the neighbors, and they're much more in favor of this design than what had previously been approved.
Jeff, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
I didn't see it, maybe I missed it. Do we have a, an existing layout and a proposed layout, just showing what the changes are?
Existing, yes. The existing house and the proposed house, yes.
But I mean, actually, you know...
The footprint?
Dumming it down for me, yeah. What are the footprint are we using, what are the existing structure are we using, and what's new? I guess what I'm getting at is how much more volume are we putting in that front yard setback?
From this diagram, this yellow line you see here, this line around here represents the existing house.
You're right.
This outer perimeter of the crosshatch area is the proposed. One of the things that's happening here, the existing house, basically, you go straight across here, they're now stepping back with a porch here. To the right of the house, this is going to be an open two-story deck. The house is smaller than the 2017 variance by a substantial width amount. I think we've got some different drawings showing, you know, obviously that is the proposed rendering, and we do have a rendering, an overlay here which shows the blue outline being the 2017 variance that was granted, and this green outline is our current proposal. So you can see that there's a substantial, less impact on the street face of this house than what was previously approved. And when you look at, this is a rendering of what, 2017 variance?
I saw that on Zillow, actually.
Yeah, yeah, it was, yep. That was part of the marketing of the property back then. So this plan doesn't even show it correctly because they have, had moved the garage doors to the front of the house per recommendations. I guess the neighbor was very much opposed to this being on this side, and they preferred to see it on the front. There's a number of things that we are looking at doing here that have resulted from some environmental conditions. As you can see in these photographs, there's flooding that happens here, substantial. And raising this house up and doing some of the grading, creating a driveway that's going to be in front of the house, it's going to raise up, where you're gonna be able to actually park your cars out of the flood area, and we're seeing this happening more and more.
So you don't know the amount in which you reduced the scale of the overall building?
Was it...
The existing to the proposed, the plans we approved in 2017 compared to now, what's the difference?
That was this other...
You said it's significant, you don't know if it's...
A comparison between the 2017 and the...
Right, and the currently proposed plans.
That is, that's one of the, here, I believe, here's the plan here. This red outline that you see is the proposed 2017 footprint, and our footprint is the crosshatch area in here.
Yeah, I can see it's much smaller, I just don't know how much smaller it is, are we talking like 900 square?
I can give you some...
Yeah.
Can't that be the owner? So...
Okay, I will, I'll let Ken address some of those issues when it comes to the proposed construction.
So, just looking at that right there, okay, from the right post corner of that overhead to the left, no, just the front section.
This...
Yeah, that's all existing?
No, we have photographs showing the...
I saw these...
These photographs show the existing...
Right. My point is though, that, that's, that section of the house is staying, you're just putting a second story on the right half, and you're putting a gable dormer on the left half.
I can explain.
Great.
Yeah, so am I on the record officially, can't that be?
You are now.
You are now. Yeah. So this is the existing structure, and this, you know, so we're looking to renovate this. So part of the thought is, we knew because of the proximity to the road, this section is the middle section that essentially will remain intact, obviously the roof comes off for the new roof to be put on there. This section will come down to the foundation, and part of that is it's gotta go higher, and the other part of it is, we've designed it with that step-back porch to move that bulk back six feet, and it gives a little nice aesthetic to it, you know, it's a little softer. So I've talked with, I don't know, 15 of the neighbors, and most of them have written letters that they like this much better than what was already approved, they didn't fight what was approved, but it, this house is, I'll give you some of the numbers, it's, the bulk of the house is 88 feet long, whereas, plus the porch, which is 16 feet, an open porch, the Thomas house was 111 feet long. So you can see that in that overlay that we showed you before. Square footage is not that much different if you just take the first and second floors. I was coming up, they had a listing that it was 4,900 square feet, I don't, I think that was maybe a little embellishment on the listing. I'm coming up with probably closer, just over 4,500, I'm just over 4,300. So it's square footage, mine, this is a little deeper, but we are using the entire foundation here, the entire foundation here, and the garage, we're just stepping back seven feet to again push anything new back from the road. Does that make sense?
How tall, yes, it does, thank you. How tall is the new structure?
So the new...
Comparative to what's existing.
You've got that shown on here, you can, you can see, the green is our proposed, the blue was the 2017 proposed.
No, no, I'm asking...
Existing.
Oh, from the existing.
Versus 2018 proposed.
I believe we have that on the zoning location survey, we had the building height listed on here, we just have it listed as less than 30 feet, I believe it's close to like 185 or something like that.
I get that it's conforming, but I'm just curious of what kind of volume we're putting in that, in that setback area. Right, because we're lifting the house, right?
No, no, so, just, I guess if we go back to these...
Sorry, guys.
So I guess even here, in trying to show it...
Yeah.
So this is the existing house here, and the existing roof comes up here, it doesn't come this tall because there's no floor there, but we designed this second floor in this area, so this remains, this whole section remains. This roof, when it comes off, creates this roof, so that roof is a shower pitch, and now there'll be living space up there. You follow me?
I do.
This is the, this is the water side that we're...
No, this is the roadside.
The roadside.
This is the roadside.
Which was flooded in that picture.
The entire property was flooded in that picture, and that was the nor'easter in October. That wasn't sandy, that wasn't Irene, that was the nor'easter.
We approved this plan, so what prompted you, am I missing something? What prompted you to go back and change this?
A, we didn't, my wife and I were not fans of the design that they came up with, it was kind of cold and it just wasn't something that we wanted to do. We were trying to, the foundation is in great shape, I've got a letter from an engineer...
Okay, that helps.
And we're essentially using the entire structure, just adding this wing, and there's an addition in the back, but it's perfectly in good shape. It's actually better on the soils that are there, and part of this original variance was saying, the further back you go, the more you get into fill and unstable soils. This foundation, as old as it is, is in excellent shape.
How do you, how do you raise it if you're using the existing foundation?
I don't need...
You don't, you're not willing to raise it?
Well, you extend the foundation, so this section...
Okay, I'm just gonna go on top, okay, yeah.
This section remains, and this section just, it's extended just a little bit.
So you're going higher for water reasons?
Yeah, so, yeah, but now you're getting to my point, so we are raising it. We're using the existing foundation, but we're going up.
Yeah.
Because when I look at the pictures of the existing house, your garage door is where that stone wall is.
Yeah, when he asked about the height, how much higher are you going from what's there now?
Unfortunately, Jeff doesn't have that number from the existing, but it's less than what was already approved, not only a two-story front bulk, which is 111 feet long, versus...
Because you changed the line.
Essentially, it's a shorter house, it's not as, it's not as wide.
See, I mean, that garage door is on grade, and when I go to your renderings, I've gotta step up four steps to get to the front door.
Correct, this is that first floor level now, this section here, so that roof...
Right, so we're going up, okay, that's what I'm trying to figure out.
Yeah, we're going up over this section, but all this needs to be done for FEMA, this house isn't anywhere near FEMA compliant, and the entire property, as you can see in the nor'easter, the entire property, there isn't one speck of grass that wasn't underwater in October.
So on the right box, for the right half of the house, just so I understand that, your first floor starts about where those, that row of windows is?
Right about here, this, the windows are up from the floor, so you'd be looking at, yeah, about this elevation right here, where I have my dot.
Is where the floor of the first floor of the new structure will be?
Actually, one step down, so this remains, this floor level, this floor remains, the walls remain, the roof has to come off because it's going up, and, but there's one step down, and then the porch is here.
And that will be at the elevation 15 that we're looking at.
Okay.
To comply, I mean, again, we've gotta get up now quite a bit for FEMA, which is the challenge, obviously, and...
A 13 flood zone, so, you know...
But it's interesting, by raising it, you're not going up in height, you're keeping the height.
No, we're going up in height.
But how much, that's what you keep asking, yeah.
Yeah, the...
Yeah, it has to go up, I mean, if you're going to build a...
It has to go up no matter what it is, no matter where it is, you can see from what's there, that it's going to have to be lifted for FEMA.
And any of the houses, when you look, you know, in, anywhere along the shore where a house is being raised, you know, you're getting higher, and...
No, no, I get that, but where we're, where we're 25 feet from the road as opposed to 40 feet, it becomes significant how much structure is in that space, and that's what I'm trying to dial into, because what really you're doing is you're putting a single-story addition on the left and a two-story addition on the right.
Yes, well, except you've gotta realize too, it's in the roof line, so this roof line is not...
Yeah, I mean, it's not a full, right, it's not a full story.
It's not a full another story and then a roof, it's inside the roof line, and that's, we've designed it that way to try and, you know, yeah, keep it kind of in scope and in scale as best you can.
But that kind of gets back to the original variance and the question as to whether this work, since it will comply with the height regulations, it will comply with the bulk regulations. since it will comply with the height regulations, it will comply with the bulk regulations, it will comply with all of the setbacks, as established by that variance, is the variance necessary?
Yeah, here's, this is, this is, right, this was part of the variance, right?
Yeah, that, yeah, that's, that's, that was a little sketch that they showed.
So this is showing that that twenty-five foot setback was established. So part of the question is.
This is a 1954 that we're looking at?
Or 2017?
Yeah.
No, that's, no, that's, that's.
Nineteen fifty-four.
Yeah, that's the original variance that established that twenty-five foot setback. I think the previous application, I don't think they had any interest in trying to salvage the house. To me, it's gonna shorten the process, it's gonna be less impact on the property, and it's, and it's in perfectly good shape, it's like, why throw it away?
Definitely less impact on the neighbors also in terms of construction time and.
Time and, and everything.
COVID being brought in and all that.
And every single neighbor, if you read, read the letters, every single neighbor, there wasn't one that didn't either, you know, wasn't, this is way better, there wasn't anybody who was hemming and hawing about it, it was like, this is way better, we support it a hundred percent.
They generally wait until after we've made a decision, then they, then they complain.
That's why I got it in writing.
Yeah, no, we're, we're, we're just trying to be, trying to be mindful here. So, I'm sorry, I, I, I'm still struggling with it, I get that it's going up now, right, so we established that, we don't know how high it's going up, we don't know how big that stone piece is, correct?
Stone piece.
The white addition or the left addition?
The, the stone one.
Yeah.
All the stone one, we don't know how tall that is.
Oh, it's at elevation eleven, I can, I can.
Well, the stone, or the stone, stone facing on the house.
Right, so how much of that is there?
That wall in front, and, and part of this was, okay, I mean, you've seen the houses in Row 8, and they're even on the water, part of it was trying to transition this, so it looks grounded. The original approval had stone walls, and I think that was denied anyway, but it was a very cold kind of, you know, stark grading. We tried to do it as a much more natural grading, so it transitions up and grounds the house, versus something kinda so linear as that.
Yeah, I, I don't, I honestly, I don't, I don't care about the 2017 application when I look at this, it's a new application, it's a new.
And part of it, we're still asking the question, do we even need to be here, or is that twenty-five already been granted?
Well, it's, I mean, we can deliberate on that as a question.
Well, you're looking for twenty-four point one, so you have to be here.
Well, no, the twenty, the twenty-five point one is to the face of the building, the twenty-four point one is to the eave overhang, and in the past, I mean, you look at, the regulations allow you to be one foot over the building setback line with the eaves, so we're treating that twenty-five foot front yard as a setback.
But in every other regard, this is an improvement, you can't address the height, but in every other way.
Yeah, and, and I think we've done everything by, you know, even the neighbors, the other comment that they liked is the garage in the, in the approved plan steps forward, and it's like the most prominent feature here, it's stepped back seven feet, the porch on the right, we've done everything we can to use that structure, but push it back visually and structurally.
But you're not, you're not asking for a height variance?
No.
Not at all, no.
So, why do we care how high it is?
It's just about the front.
Because it's, it's how much volume we're putting in the front yard setback, that's what we always.
Are you just.
It's a little catch-twenty-two there.
Yeah, we do.
If they're within the regs on the height.
Yeah, we comply, and that's part of the reason that we've designed that second floor in the roof line, it helps keep it as grounded as you possibly can, and get.
All right.
What, what walls are you keeping, and what walls are you knocking down?
We are, so, the right wing will have to come down to the foundation, because again, I can't, the porch is going back, so I'm moving that wall back, and it's gotta go higher, it's gotta comply, it's gotta get up, so.
Go to the original house, we always have, get hung up on this issue.
Right, the walls, and what are you keeping and all that?
This, all this foundation will stay and get used.
Yep.
These walls have to come down, because this wall's no longer there, it's pushed back six feet to visually push that bulk back.
Yep.
This section stays, except the roof will come off.
Gotcha.
There's a rear addition, but that's, you know, that back wall, but this, essentially this part stays what's here, except for the, the hat comes off.
So all the walls on that part stay.
Except for the rear, where it goes a little bit further in the back.
And Ken, where will the utilities be, I assume on the side?
Everything will comply, everything will comply.
So we're just talking about a foot to the eaves in the front?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's unusual, isn't it?
But we just felt, the house, the foundation, the structure is in good shape, I mean, to, to just throw it away, and, 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 you know, even though the other one is pushed back, it's way more bulk, if you look at the a hundred and eleven feet of two-story structure plus the roof.
I think it looks great, I really do, I like what you've done, I think it reduces the mass, we'll see what these guys think of it, but I, from a, as a Realtor, I like it.
That's a comment we've gotten from every neighbor, and they've written letters to this.
What, what is the foundation, is it cinder block?
It's block, yes.
It's block, not rubble stone or?
I have an engineer's letter, if you'd like to see it.
We saw that, that was great.
Oh, it's in there.
We saw it.
Yeah, so we did that up front.
That was smart, because we always ask for that, yep. The one thing that would've been helpful, I'm sure what Michael's looking for, is the original with the overlay on it of the changes, but I think your point is that we approved this variance in 2017, now you're coming back with even less of a demand on the property, you've reduced scale, you've reduced volume, so it's an improvement on what we already approved, is your point.
And, and the height, to be honest, I mean, you've gotta take the FEMA part into consideration, I mean, look at the property, the things underwater, there's no way you're not gonna make this higher, to comply.
Yeah, no, that wasn't my point on the height, I was just trying to figure what it was.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know, you guys didn't bring the information, I didn't bring the information.
I don't know what I'm approving, like, is, is that, is that stone wall five feet high, is it?
But as long as we're not branding a variance on the height, you're okay with it, is that the issue, as long as it's within?
But it's, it's, it's not, it's not a stone wall, it's stone face on the house.
It's a face on its foundation.
Right, it's part of the foundation of the house.
All right, well, let me just, let me try and attack this from a different angle, you said that you were gonna raise the existing foundation.
You're going to.
You're extending it.
Extend it up.
Okay, this section, the foundation is where it is, the floor is where it is, it's just the roof that comes off, okay? This section, the foundation gets extended, but minimally, it's, the, the first floor is at nine point nine, now it's going to be at fifteen, so, you know, it's, it's gonna be extended, the found, the block will be extended a little bit in that section.
So you're basically looking at it as being a four-foot, four-foot exposed stone face.
But there's no way to do that porch section without, you know, and, and reduce some of that wall without doing what we're doing.
Well, I, the previous plan is so stark and bulbous almost, I mean, where this has a lot more.
Dimension and interest, yep.
Much better.
Everybody in the neighborhood felt it, felt more in character with the area, than something that just would've been.
It's beautiful, I like, I like what you did.
Very nice.
And it also complies with the FEMA and everything else, so it's.
It solves every problem we could possibly solve, and.
And it improves that house, I like.
Yeah, breathe in, hit that house, all right, good.
And, and it's not a house going on the market, he's living in.
Yeah, this is, yeah, this is not a spec house, this is from my wife and I.
Are you a builder?
I'm a builder, yeah, I've been in town for thirty-five years, we've done this a bunch, we're just, this is kind of, we've got our last child at home, had a senior in the high school, and hoping to kinda get to this, a little smaller, a little more manageable, and, yep.
What do you, do you have anything further?
Well, I think you should look at the front driveway and the retaining wall, that was previously pretty much rejected by the ZBA in 2017, in favor of just holding the parking on the left. This is quite a change from that.
So this is the, this is the sort of turnaround in front?
Right, this is, this, this is the raised section of the driveway that we're doing to accomplish two things, one is to soften the look of the front of the house by sloping this grade up, there'll be like a loose rubble boulder wall along this area, and then it will slope up, so that this driveway will allow you an area to park to avoid getting flooded by the more frequent floods that we are going to be seeing.
I mean, it only gets you up to elevation ten, so, I mean, there are a lot of people who got caught in that nor'easter, they had no, you know, it's coastal flooding, the same old thing you hear every day, you know, but that was something beyond that, and that was in October, so that, to me, it does two things, it allows us to place the park a little high and dry, and it also transitions the house.
And I believe we did have some comments from some of the neighbors who felt that having the parking in front of this house and not having people park on Berry Lane, as has happened in the past.
That's right.
Everybody did like that, that transition, and, and most of them put it in the letter, a lot of them put it in the letter, but one of the comments from the Berry Lane people is, that'll be great, no one's parking in front of my house.
Yeah, and it minimizes the height of the house.
Yeah, I think it grounds it nicely.
And this has to go before planning and zoning, it's part of the landfilling and regrading application that we will be doing in January.
Is your generator and HVAC FEMA compliant?
Everything, everything will be FEMA compliant, it'll be, everything will be up on platforms, we're hoping to do geothermal, we put the AC units on the plan as a backup, but we're hoping to do geothermal, which means there'll be no AC compressors.
And they're in the buildable area?
Everything, no variance for, for that, yeah.
Gotcha, okay.
So the neighbor that's actually over here is, is, and it's in his letter too, is very much in favor of not pushing back, because his view, is essentially looking over my yard down the river.
He supported you in 2017, I mean, he.
No, that was, that was the previous neighbor, it's a new neighbor.
This is, this, this photograph here is looking across the, the rear of the existing house towards the neighbor's house, and their view is all across this backyard, in fact, their property even sweeps around behind this property, and their dock is, is, almost looks like it's part of this property, but it's not. You can see.
In the previous application, I remember that very clearly.
Yeah, and that was his request too, is to, you know, stay forward and not block his vista. So, I've gotten all the support I can possibly get from the neighbors, only supporters are here.
Any, any further questions from the board?
No.
Chuck, you good?
No.
Okay, anything further from the applicant? Anyone in the audience wish to be heard? Seeing no one, we will go ahead and close the application, thank you very much for your time, Stephen.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That concludes, right, our public hearings, what am I missing? That concludes our public hearings, we can go into deliberation and discussion on EPLA. So, I'll, I'll, I'll open it up to the table.
Is this the only one now?
Yeah, because we've, we've continued, Maslin, I, I think this is all an improvement all around, I mean, I'm, I'm good with everything.
I have no problem with any of it, I think it's wonderful. It's needed something.
I wish I knew what I was approving.
I get what you're asking, I mean, we really didn't see what the new height is, what the stone wall is, but do we care? It's still less scale than.
If it doesn't require a variance.
That's what I'm wondering, I mean.
But they're, they're asking for a front yard, front yard board.
But it's a one foot, yeah.
But they're putting, well, no, it's not, I mean, it depends on how you interpret it.
How are you interpreting it?
If you interpret it that the, whatever, nineteen fifty-four application, approved a twenty-five foot front yard setback, then they, they, they're asking for.
They're twenty-four point one.
Twenty-four point one, but if you interpret that that was an application for building a structure that close to the road, which was a story and a half structure, right, they're asking.
Now they're increasing the mass, so, get your point.
So they're, they're asking for two stories on one part of it, and another story on the other.
I just think it's such a weird lot, I think they've done the best they can.
And that's their hardship, and, and I'm.
It is their hardship, you get the, I mean, the water issues and everything, I think it's, I, I'm blown away, we approved the last round, and I know that that's a separate issue, but I think this is a complete improvement.
I agree.
No problem.
Chuck?
I, I don't have any problem, so long as we can set forth what's gonna stay and what's gonna go.
Yes.
Where they pointed out.
Yeah, but I just put it in our, in our resolution, because when they say, well, this over here, and this over here, I don't know what, what that means.
And the height should be recorded.
When you look at it later. Yeah, so I don't, I'm, so, Woody, I, you can just take what was said and put it into a.
So are those stipulations, or are those?
Some of them wanna make a rest, some of them wanna make a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Okay, hang on a second, do you wanna put any stipulations on that?
I, I think I would like to see the height recorded as a stipulation, and Chuck's point about specifying what stays and what goes, yes Chuck, or no?
Yeah, there's a, yes, a suggested stipulation here that, that Woody put into his staff questions, that goes something like this, significant segments of the existing structure shall be preserved, including the existing foundation, question mark, first floor deck, first floor perimeter walls, and I think, and we know the answers to those questions, I can't specify exactly as I sit here, but I'm sure Woody took notes. Any problem conforming with any part of this requirement shall be immediately brought to the attention of the zoning staff. The ZBA will then be asked to reconsider the project circumstances and determine if any change to the project plans is necessary. So with that stipulation setting forth, what's, what's staying, I'm fine.
One other comment, the grading issue would be approved by P and Z, so that's not us, okay, all right.
Any issues with the driveway? Jeff was very adamant about those retaining walls in, in the last, I didn't, I don't know why.
I don't either, I.
I think as long as they're not, I know what the neighbors on Berry Lane, Mandy Bowles up there, so, I mean, people would park up that street, so I mean, I totally think what you're doing is the right thing.
Yeah, I have no problem.
It's a busy corner.
So we've got, we've got a motion with stipulations?
Yep.
We've got a second, all in favor?
Yeah, that's that.
Congrats, Merry Christmas. It looks great, guys, really.
Thank you very much.
When are you gonna start?
Any other?
We're done with our hearing, yes, on to Channel Seventy.
Good luck.
Any other business, they, they stay on with that?
Do they stay on for other business?
Yeah, it's quit, right?
No, Judy's done.
I'm done.
Judy's done, just, Woody, do you have anything else you wanna do, or can we go?
Yeah, if you could read through a few of the other business items.
Woody, you don't even sound like you, I don't know what you sound like, you sound like you inhale a balloon.
Okay, approval of minutes November fourteen, twenty eighteen, ZBA meeting was Vic and Gary Green, can we approve that with just Vic here?
It was just me and him?
I guess this was the night you guys sat in the hallway to carry over our business.
Okay.
And all we really have for that is this summary.
Do we, do we, were those minutes searched?
Oh, yeah.
Did I care?
I did not.
Okay, we're gonna carry that over to get those reviewed by Vic, approval of minutes November sixteenth, Chuck, you were here, Jeff, Chris, and Barb, we got a bunch of you here.
Which one is this, Woody, which application is that? Oh, the minutes.
This was Friday.
The whole meeting.
For, for, yeah.
It was a Friday evening thing.
Do you have a chance to look at those, Chuck?
I did, I moved their approval.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor, great, okay. Election twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, officers by regular members only, do we have enough regular members here, three of us?
Three of us, yeah.
Yeah, I think so.
Are you interested in continuing?
I'll, I'll, since I've been off for seven months, I feel like I'm, I'll, I'll pull water for one more year.
Okay.
Congratulations, Mr. Church.
Use our vice.
We need advice.
Is Jeff still interested? I don't know.
Yeah, he said he was.
Okay.
He did say he would carry on, he was kinda burned out lately.
All right, hopefully we won't have any more conflit that we had this year, or past year, okay. So Jeff and I'll continue.
We need motions and votes though.
You need, can three of us do it?
Yeah, Gary's fine with Mike and Jeff continuing, so I can add that to the record that we put.
I don't know if I can make a motion.
I'll, I'll make a mo.
I think we'll make it.
I'll make a motion, Jeff and.
We have a second?
Second.
Favor?
You guys can't help.
Your alternates?
Although we're more regular than most people.
Consequences of ZBA inability to meet decision deadline for appeal and variance applications, I think, assume that's just a John Luizos question?
It is, and I have a preliminary report from John Luizos about that, because it came up and was a problem for us November sixteen, in fact. So far, what his research has concluded is that there's no case law that says there'd be a penalty for us not meeting a deadline, planning and zoning commission for site plans there is, there's an automatic approval provision if P and Z commission does not make it, but for us, apparently, there's no case law that says the applicant actually has a right to get a decision. They said that adjunctive relief would probably have to occur, but I'll send along the memo they put together. But I'll send along the memo they put together if, if they authorize me to, I haven't got my green light yet.
All right, so I think in the future, if there's inclement weather, obviously, board members should use their discretion as to whether they, they come out or not. You know, there's no forced provision for you to be there. So, use your discretion, and if, if, in Jeff's case, he was, he was upset because he felt like he was forced to come here, and that's not really the case. So if he doesn't show up, he doesn't show up, that's just how it works out. And, and then we'll get a little bit further clarification from John, but it sounds like if, if we don't have any, any consequence to it, then we'll just take it up the next night, right?
Whatever, we can't, happen that Sunday was the deadline.
So we take it up, we take it up the, the following week? I think, I think, I think any judge would say that that was reasonable, that, that we acted, you know, as long as we, as long as we act quickly on it, I think, I think we're okay. So I think in the future, Woody, let's, let's try not to put, uh-
Yeah, we'd like to avoid that definitely. We had a fairly detailed discussion in October, added a lot of language to that for truly Weaver case, then we continue into November to try to get it polished up, and that's what put us into-
Gives a dead eye.
Plus, we closed the hearing in July, and we postponed the regrading for two months to September to hopefully give them a chance to work things out.
And we got, we got stuck at the end, yeah, and we met on, when did we meet, Friday afternoon or something?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We got snuckered on that, okay. All right. Possible policy regarding applicant contacts to ZBA members, I think that probably relates directly to Wilder Gleason's contact to Jeff, Gary, and I. I mean, I, I take the position, if an applicant wants to copy me on an email to staff as the chairman, I think that's fine, but I know, Woody, you think that, that maybe it should go through different channels? I really, you know, I really don't, it doesn't, doesn't bother me. I don't think they should be calling or contacting or, or, like Jeff had, the experience of Giovanni's talking to his wife about an application, I think that's completely inappropriate, but I think if a, if a, if an attorney wants to copy the chair on communication to staff, Chuck, do you see any issues?
No, I don't see any problems with that, I, I, I'm, I'm sorry, you, go ahead.
But, but that would be like public record kind of thing anyway. Any email that would be sent to you would be something anyone could get a copy of, so why not?
The issue I, I have is I don't like to get called on the telephone.
Yeah.
You know, at home.
Or cornered in public, that's the kind of thing, yeah.
In my office, being called by the applicant's attorney, which has happened. So I prefer that we have some kind of policy that prevents that from occurring.
Yeah, so-
It puts you in a very awkward position.
Yeah, so-
I wouldn't, I don't mind the emails, it's the personal contact, one-on-one kind of stuff.
Yeah, so Wilder, so that's actually what happened here, is Wilder called me on an application, and I said, "You know what? Send an email to Woody, copy me on it." And, you know, because that's, that's as much as I'm going to discuss it with you.
Yeah.
So, I, I think, I think that's, to me, that's okay. I think we should probably get John Louiezo's to, to give that his, his papal seal and-
Yeah, what we can do is get right up the policy, include it in our-
Everybody maybe should get copied on it, and then it's just like he spoke to everybody.
Yeah, I think it gets a little-
Well, then maybe he won't do it.
But how- No, no, I think it becomes more taxing for the board members. Maybe he sends it to the chair, and it's an issue that I think we need to discuss, and, and, or, or the chair or the vice chair, and we think it's an issue that needs to be discussed, and, and Woody doesn't bring it up, or Woody doesn't think it's an issue, then we can, we can address it.
Yeah.
I like the idea of a fallback policy, if somebody approaches me, I can say, "Look, the policy of ZBA is that we cannot talk about this."
Well, it's 100%, that is 100%.
That's all I'm asking for.
Yeah, it happens sometimes too, when you go to look at the property, and the person might be outside, and, you know, it's-
Right, they want to plead their case.
You have to tell them who you are and, and so forth, and I think we have to be able to say to them, "Listen, we really can't talk about the application."
Yeah, for the policy of zoning board, because we're not allowed to do that, yeah.
All right, so let's, let's-
So we can work on some language to put something together.
And how do you prevent the lobbying? I mean, presenting facts or asking a question is okay, but if they're lobbying for their case, is that okay?
Yeah.
That's okay.
Why not?
We still ignore it.
You mean on emails?